Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, March 24th. It is 7:03, so just after 7 o'clock. The first case we have with us this evening is case number 20-40, Wall Street Development Corporation Administrative Appeal of the Zoning Enforcement Officer's Notice of Cease and Desist Regarding Property at 48 Burns Ave. For the Violation of the Comprehensive Permit Number 5-19 that is currently under appeal. Specifically Condition A7 requiring compliance with all local regulations unless waived. Condition A13 requiring compliance with various conditions prior to any site clearing, tree removal, or grading. So, we opened this and it's been continued to tonight. And at this point, I want to give the applicant, or the appellant in this case, Mr. Petrosi, good evening. Do you want to address the board on this cease and desist?
Well, quite thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this has been going on since, I guess, November 30th was when this order was issued. We haven't really pursued any adverse action towards the cease and desist, but we do think that the cease and desist was issued inappropriately and prematurely. As you, as the board knows, that we have an existing comprehensive permit that was issued on the property, but the comprehensive permit consisted or was applicable to three parcels of land. The property that the cease and desist order was issued for was 48 Burns Ave., which is a separate parcel of land. But in any event, the, any activities that were undertaken there during this process were fully above board and with full knowledge of the various, of the building department and the water department. And, you know, we're quite surprised that the town would revert to that kind of action for no apparent reason. But we provided some evidence as to, you know, you could break this down into components. We're obviously authorized to construct the right-of-way of Burns Ave. on the Mass General laws. We're also allowed under your zoning bylaws to bring in certain amounts of material on an annual basis. And we're also allowed under demolition permit to restore the site and clean the site for, to bring it into conformance under the building code. So, like I said earlier, we're not trying to circumvent any, any regulations. We're, I think, following all of the regulations. So, I have nothing else to add to that, except we have the documentation that we've provided.
Thank you. Mr. Janovic, good evening. As the zoning enforcement officer, could you explain your position on this? Thanks.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm with the board. So, Mike Janovic, Building Commissioner of Town of Walpole. So, you know, I think the key here is, I just today finally read Lou's February 23rd memo and was able to kind of extract some of the, some of the language. And I think the key term is disingenuous that Lou put in that memo. And so Lou and I have had conversations about this property straight through. Lou was very well aware what was going on. And my key words to him were tread lightly, as he talked about clearing, as he talked about adding soil. Lou knows very well that the building code does require you to fill in a foundation after demolition, and that's what he did. And I told him not to do any more than that. Continued to come in and tell me he's bringing trucks in. There's demo debris there that he's going to utilize on the development site. And I continued to tell him to tread lightly. We've had these conversations. He was in the building department. So, I find it, you know, offensive that he would say this was issued prematurely and that there was political motivation behind this. I issued the orders out of my office. This came from my own hand with a pen in my hand. That's where it came from. And I believe he is in violation. Lou keeps claiming that he's subject to as-of-right activity on the site. Well, Lou decided to file the comprehensive permit. And Lou was issued a set of conditions that go along with that comprehensive permit. And in those conditions, there are prequalifications before he can gain a building permit. And as was cited on the cease and desist, clearing and filling and whatnot was specifically forbidden. Lou came in subsequent to that notice and told me he was going to file a 48 permit on that site with the foundation so that he could go ahead and fill the site. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. I obviously believe that he's exceeded what he's allowed to do on the site, regardless of what he keeps claiming is as-of-right. Went behind the conversations that we were having and went ahead and issued this memo. I believe he's in violation and needs to stop until he satisfies the requirements of whatever addition of the 40B project he's on now. The comprehensive permit that's been issued, I believe he's subject to those conditions. And that means following the local bylaws, which prohibit the filling and clearing, as well as following the conditions that says that he's not to fill or clear prior to the permit being issued. So, I think it's cut and dry. You know, deny, defer, deflect on this memo here. But regardless of that, I believe it's cut and dry in that he should cease and desist until he satisfies the requirements of the comprehensive permit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Janovic. And yeah, I think that the, I think that the conditions have been exceeded. He's exceeded the activities that would be normally allowed. And I don't see it as that complicated. Board members, do you have any questions for either Mr. Janovic or Mr. Petrosi? Okay. So, at this point, with, you know, with guidance from Town Council, Mr. Pucci, is this where we, the zoning board closes, takes a vote to close the, this hearing?
Yes. If nobody wants to discuss or ask any questions while the hearing is still open. And typically, you'll also ask if anybody else wants to be heard on it from the public. I doubt that anyone does, but typically you'll check that.
Okay. I will, I will ask if there's, Amy, can you see if there's anybody from the public that wants to be heard? This is just on the cease and desist order. So, if somebody wants to, please raise your hand.
I'm sorry. I don't see anyone from the public that has their hand raised.
Okay. So, at this point, could I have a motion to close case number 20-40? This is the administrative appeal hearing.
So, moved.
Moved by Suzanne, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion on, and this is just closing the hearing? Okay. So, this will be a roll call vote to close the hearing. Suzanne Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Bob Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Jane Coffey?
Aye.
Drew Delaney?
Aye.
I'm John Lee, aye. Okay. The hearing is closed. So, now, I'm going to be very careful. And George, I'm going to ask for your help on this to make sure that we word this correctly. On, at this point, at least, I feel that, you know, we can have some deliberations, but I feel that I'm comfortable upholding the decision of the zoning enforcement officers' Notice of Cease and Desist. Is there anybody else that wants to make any comments about that? Okay. So, George, go ahead, Bob.
No, I think, you know, to my mind, the applicant had come forward. We granted a comprehensive permit and development on that site, in, to advance that project is governed by the comprehensive permit. It's not a situation where you get to choose whether or not you want to proceed under that permit or some other, you know, if you were abandoning that project and wanted to proceed under 48, then we'd have a different project and we'd have a different discussion. But, so in my view, I think the conditions of the permit, you know, clearly apply.
Okay. So, now, it's, Town Council can, how would you, how is it best to word a motion for this?
So, if, so, example of a motion, if, if the board were inclined that they want to deny the appeal and uphold the cease and desist order, then I would recommend a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the cease and desist order.
Okay. Okay. Could I have a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the cease and desist order?
Second.
Actually, you need to move first. Suzanne?
Move.
Okay. Move by Suzanne.
I jumped the gun. Sorry, Jane.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? So, a yes vote will mean that you are in favor of upholding the cease and desist order? Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. So, so this is a roll call vote. Suzanne Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Jane Coffey?
Aye.
Bob Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Drew Delaney?
Aye.
And I'm John Lee, aye. Okay. So, the cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer is upheld. Okay. Mr. Janovic, thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening. Okay. Okay. Next, we have, continuing on with Burns Ave., we're going to jump to the next item on the agenda. I'm sorry, the third item on the agenda tonight, but we're going to keep Burns Ave. together. This is case number 0519-3, Wall Street Development Corporation, 48 Burns Ave., Request for Substantial Project Change Number 3. Is dated in applicant's letter dated February 14th, 2021, for modification of Condition E13 related to comprehensive permit, case number 15-19. And that was dated January 13th, 2020. So, we opened this, so we've already determined that this was a substantial modification. And now, I guess the question is for a discussion. And we can have comments from the applicant and the public on, on this condition. In this condition, as we know, involves the hours of, hours of operation. So, okay. Mr. Petrosi, do you want to make some opening comments on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't know whether or not we were going to go in order of the initial request for modifications that was dated in January 26th, subsequently amended to on February 10th. And then this request here for the hours of operation was a subsequent request for modification. So, I'll go in any order you want. If that's where you want to start.
Mr. Petrosi, we're dealing with Condition E13.
Okay. Fine. I have it, yeah. So, as you may recall during the hearing process, the board had expressed some concerns regarding school-aged children on Burns Ave. And cited that as a primary reason for restricting the hours of operation from the typical start time of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. With stop work at 5:00 p.m. when typical bylaw operations is 7:00 p.m. So, we're simply asking that the board consider modifying that to allow us to start work at the standard hour of 7:00 a.m.
Okay. So, you don't have, are you also appealing the end of the workday at 5:00 p.m.?
You know, that is certainly not as important as the start time. I mean, obviously during summer months, you know, in terms of trying to get the project done and completed, there may be times when people might want to work a little late. But the initial start time is the most important part of this request.
Okay. And just to get this going, one of the things you mentioned, talking about schoolchildren at Burns Ave., it's much more than just Burns Ave. It's the Burns Ave. neighborhood and Pleasant Street and Walcott Ave. And all the streets there that this would relate to as far as vehicle traffic going in and out. So, it's not just Burns Ave. And so, other board members, any thoughts or questions on this?
Go ahead, Suzanne.
Mr. Petrosi had submitted a letter from the bus driver or somebody saying that no children get on the bus today. But then we received correspondence from people that live on the street that their children are definitely going to be taking the bus in the fall. So, I definitely think the 8 o'clock is much more safe for the neighborhood. Those kids are walking. It's, it's a kindergarten kid too. And it's, I think it's much, much safer at 8 o'clock. Especially in the months where it's dark at 7:00.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. Bob, did you have a comment?
Yeah. This might be a question for Mr. Pucci. Talking about a condition that was originally included in our comprehensive permit decision that was then appealed to the HAC. And I don't know if this particular condition was, you know, one of the challenged conditions, but I'm, I'm just wondering, just procedurally, do we, are we supposed to entertain modifications to items in the comprehensive permit that could have been appealed but weren't? I'm just trying to understand if this, can you come back as many times as you want to, to request modifications even though the permit's under appeal? I'm just trying to understand what our role is as the board here.
To the chair? Yes. I mean, the applicant has the right to come back for project changes even though the permit is under appeal. He could have gone through, the regulations are a little bit unclear whether he's required, since there's a pending appeal with the HAC on the original permit. You know, there are regulations providing that he would go to HAC first, seek a determination whether it's substantial or not. And the presiding officer in the HAC appeal would decide whether to send that back to the board in the meantime. Here, he filed the notice of project change directly with the board. So, I, you know, once you made that determination that it's a substantial change and scheduled the public hearing, I would go ahead and act on that. He has the right to, you know, seek change, modifications while the appeal is pending, for sure. It's a little unusual to see, you know, multiple requests for project change while an HAC appeal is pending. Just a little bit odd. I mean, the only, when you usually see them is when there's some type of change, like some type of state permit which results in, you know, having to move around the approved plan or, you know, make, make some changes that are just sort of required to conform with the, with the board's decision. So, it's a little unusual to be picking, you know, selecting conditions on the original permit and coming back for a notice of project change. As opposed to the other one, which is now back on appeal with HAC, with the, you know, the, the change with the, with a new access and egress point. That's the type of thing which would typically be presented to the board for, for modification. But again, it is unusual to see, sort of picking out distinct conditions in the permit and seeking a change based on those. But the applicant does have the right to attempt to do that. And, and he's not precluded from, whether or not he appealed that particular condition to the HAC, he's not precluded from, you know, seeking a modification on it. But again, it's, it's, I know where the question is coming from. I mean, it's, it's a little unusual to be, to have them pending. Sort of, it's, there are only three, but it seems like he keeps coming back before the board on various things. And it's almost like, you know, a trap for the unwary, like a, some type of test to see if you act on these things, you know, in a timely manner. But without getting too rhetorical, essentially, yeah, the, the project changes properly before you. You have found a substant, you have found that it's substantial requiring a public hearing. So, I would go ahead and, and, you know, act on it.
Okay. Yeah. I didn't want to, I'm just asking because I don't want to get in cross purposes with the HAC by sort of dealing with subject matter that's really before them. But, okay. Thank you for that explanation. That's all I have on that, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. And Drew, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah. I think this condition is extremely justified. One point of access to the project. 7:00 means people will be lining up at 6:00. We haven't been provided with any sort of staging plan as to where materials will be staged off-site and brought in. This poses a major safety issue with the residents of Burns Ave. As well as any abutting street to that. I don't want to see a project have any sort of difficulties that can't be worked out. But, you know, you know, I guess, I think the applicant should, should look at what he's requesting of the board and the modification that he's asking of us and present a better plan as to just asking to reduce or increase his working times. I think we set this condition in place for the safety and the concerns out of the neighborhood. And I, I think it should be upheld at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. Okay. Any other board members with comments on this? Because we'll open it up to the public and see if anybody else has anything that they want to address about this condition. Okay. Amy, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this? If you do want to speak, please raise your, raise your hand or signal Amy so that she knows you want to speak.
I'm not seeing anyone at the moment raising their hand.
Okay. So, George, at this point, again, looking to you for guidance to make sure we do this correctly. We've heard from Mr. Petrosi and we've heard from board members on this. Is, is this the time now where if we wanted to, we could close the hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, board members, how do you feel? This is just for discussion. How do you feel about, do we have enough information? Are you comfortable closing, closing the hearing? And then we could vote, vote on this at some point?
I'll stay up with it.
I just had a question, though, Mr. Chairman. On, so we've had, this is the third request for modification, which deals with the hours. We had the first one which dealt with the, which was the, you know, the sort of the change in the layout of the roadway, the additional building, which we closed that hearing. And there was the, sort of the second set of requested modifications having to do with replacing references to the order of conditions to refer to the superseding order of conditions. And I don't, I guess procedurally, I don't know if we are addressing those in this hearing or whether we're going to address those in the subsequent hearing. I just don't, I just want to make sure we're not, we're fully addressing whatever requests are before us for purposes of this hearing. If that makes sense. I don't know if I made any sense at all. But...
That question makes sense to me, John. I'd go through you, though.
Go ahead, George. Yep.
Yeah. No, it's a great point because I, you've, you've opened a public hearing on, you found both of them, both of those project changes to be substantial, requiring a public hearing. You've opened the public hearing, I believe, on both of them. So, you have, I, I call them, Ashley was calling them 2.0 and things like that. I call them 1, 2, and 3. And 1, I consider the one, the substantive one with the, the new point of access and egress. That was number 1. And that's back on appeal to the HAC after the dispute over the peer review. So, that's not before you. This one, I thought, was number 3. Notice of project change number 3, the one that involved the timing and the schoolchildren and all of that. I, I had in my calendar, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you had the public hearing on this, on notice of project change number 2 on for April 7. So, that, that would not be on before you tonight if, if that's consistent with what you think.
That's my recollection, but I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page there. But, yeah.
And you are, everybody, George, Bob, you are correct. At one point, I was trying to see if we could put these all together, but because they were filed separately, they have different timelines. And that, for that reason, we need to keep them, keep them separate. But this one's rather, I think, you know, straightforward. We've had, we've had the discussion on it. We've had, you know, input from the Mr. Petrosi. And now, at this point, I think we can, you know, move, move on. So...
Chairman Lee? I'm sorry. I'm just going to point out that I do have a hand raised from the public.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
And I'm just, we haven't, we haven't closed the hearing. We were just discussing if we were going to close the hearing. So, we can still, if somebody wants, from the public wants to make a comment, I'd, I'd welcome that.
All right. It's Kathy Campbell, so I'm just going to allow her to speak. Kathy, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kathy Campbell, 35 Burns Ave. I just want to make sure that I understand. I, I know that there's three letters in front of me. One is dated January 26th. And that speaks to several conditions. I think there was nine requested modifications on that letter. And then that was revised on February 10th. And then a subsequent letter dated February 14th, which is the letter that I think we're dealing with tonight. So, is the January 26th request for modifications and the February 10th request for modifications on the ZBA on April 7th?
I think you have, yes. To answer your question, that's on April 7th, we're going to be dealing with those, those issues. Tonight, the only one we're dealing with is Condition E13. And that is from the applicant's letter dated February 14th, 2021.
Okay. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And I, I guess, as long as I'm speaking, I will say that there are, there are children on Burns Ave. and subsequent streets. And whether they're riding the bus or not, I, I, you know, in my mind, that's really not the issue. The issue is, is they will be walking on Burns Ave. and Pleasant Street and subsequent Brook Lane and subsequent streets. I don't really know the exact number, but I know there's, you know, right now, there's, I think, at least four or six children right now. So, I, I'm, again, I didn't do any due diligence on that. But I agree with the board members in terms of it not being safe to be constructing, you know, 10, 12, 14 hours a day. And obviously, as Drew was stating, you know, us being sort of the closest to all of this and not knowing where, you know, trucks are coming in and where they're going to be staged, you know, we are very concerned about, you know, the hours of operation for safety reasons. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Okay. So, at this point, do any other board members want to add any comments or anything on this? Because I think we're ready to, at least I'm ready to close this, this case. And I'll entertain a motion, motion to close case number 0519-3, Wall Street Development Corporation for project change. And this is only for Condition E13.
So, moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Suzanne, seconded by Jane. Okay. Any, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion on this? Okay. So, for this... Okay, so for this, uh, again, George, uh, guidance on. How to properly um, word a a motion for a decision to. Deny uh, deny any modification for condition E thirteen.
Mr. Chairman. I think we were entertaining a motion just to close the hearing at the at this point, do we need a vote on that before we talk about the?
Yes, yes, thank you for that point of order, uh, thank you, Bob. Sometimes we get ahead of ourselves, yeah, okay, and this is um, just to close the hearing, roll call vote, Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Bob Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Jane Coffey.
Aye.
Drew Delaney. And I'm John Lee, aye, okay, so the hearing is closed. Now, um, could I have a motion to? Deny the request for modification for condition E thirteen for case number zero five nineteen dash zero three.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? George, are you comfortable with the way that's worded?
Uh, yes, uh, you're you're kind of, you're cutting short your time a little bit to issue a written decision on it, although the. Written decision, I would assume, wouldn't be that lengthy. But if you wanted to deliberate on a decision, you know, you'd have to issue. You would have to issue the decision within forty days, you know, the written decision. Um, so if you go ahead and vote a denial tonight. You know, then then you have to issue your decision within fourteen days and file that with the town clerk. You you can do that, as long as staff has the ability to get that written decision done. Which again, should not be, I would think it won't be longer than one page.
Okay, it, Amy, is that something that you feel you'll you'll have time to do over the next few days?
I think that we can all work on it in the office and get it done, it's no problem.
Okay, and I see Patrick shaking his head also, so, okay. Okay, good, so we have the uh, the motion.
Is Patrick shaking his head or nodding his head? That's a serious question, because you you you're also gonna have to do a decision on the uh. On the um, the denial of the appeal of the cease and desist, I I just wanted to make sure he was not shaking his head versus nodding his head.
You, right. He's he's nodding his head very clearly. Okay, so this is, um, so a aye vote is to um. To deny the modification of condition E thirteen. This is a roll call vote, Suzanne Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Bob Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Jane Coffey.
Aye.
Drew Delaney. And John Lee, aye, okay, so, um. Uh, Amy, uh, we'll be able to work with you on that over the next uh, few days and. I I think this is straightforward, this is, should not be complicated and and of course, town council, uh, George, if we need any help, we'll reach out to you for. Uh, in fact, we'll have you review both of these, um, both, both of these decisions.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, next, we have case number zero five twenty. Uh, again, Wall Street Development Corporation, but this is Doopy Street, comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General laws forty B. Um, to allow construction of, uh, it's now eight duplex condominiums on the uh, on the site, so. We, we've had a number of submissions, we've had submissions from the applicant, and even today, we just had something from uh, the fire department. And uh, we've had things from all the uh, the town departments. Okay, so. Board members, uh, does anybody have any comments before we get going? So, um, Mr. Petrosi, um, do you want to start us off where where you are as far as updated? You've sent us a number of uh, revisions and letters, so take it away.
Well, we uh, we responded to the comments and concerns that the board. Expressed at the last hearing, which had to deal with. As I recall, returning it, turning analysis or for fire apparatus. Within the cul-de-sac and exiting and accessing the site. Um, and we also had a comment regarding the height of the buildings. Uh, the preliminary architectural drawings that we submitted. So in the course of having some additional dialogue. The engineers and the traffic consultant has uh, revised the plans to show. The turning, uh, adequate turning within the cul-de-sac. And um, small modification to the pavement width of the cul-de-sac to allow for the turning, turning of the apparatus. Um, I believe that was really the only change, but as a result of that change, we had to submit the whole new set of plans. So what you have is you have a copy of a revised set of uh, devout site plans. And you have the turning uh, analysis plans, which um. Uh, were provided by um, Green International, my engineer and and Bill Scully from Green International. Are here tonight to explain the um, the plans. And uh, essentially, that's really, I think, all we submitted. Um, we submitted an updated preliminary architectural plan that showed the uh, height of the building. And also, um, some other details on the plans, but. Uh, that's pretty much all we've submitted. And by, you know, just for the record, this is eight detached single family condominiums and not duplexes. So just for the record.
Okay, so, uh, we've also received some information from the uh, Walpole Fire Department that uh, came in. Either today or just just recently showing the um, the turning uh, capabilities of their equipment. Into the site from um, from mains, from main street, uh, so, sorry, Route twenty seven, High Plains Street. So, um, if board members have had a chance to look at that, um, I I hope you have and. Um, Mr. Petrosi, if you want to have uh, your your folks address the board on the. The height and the uh, new set of plans, which I believe is dated March fifteenth. Of uh, of this year, so.
Sure, well, if um, I think for the time being, let's deal with the uh, we have not seen the comments from the fire department. That, um, so we've not received those. But I'm happy to have Rob Truax and Bill Scully, or Rob Truax, put the plan up on the uh. On the screen and he can go over the changes that were made and explain the, um. What the turning analysis uh, maps actually show.
Okay, um. If uh, if you, Rob or uh, Mr. Scully, if you want to put that up on the screen, we can take a look at that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll put it up on my screen, Rob Truax, G L M Engineering Consultants. So this, um. What I'm showing you now is the change that we made on the plan. So we increased the cul-de-sac diameter to eighty two feet. We put a larger rounding on the entrance to the cul-de-sac, which is a thirty five foot radius, which generally we use thirty. And then you can see the turning movement, and I'm gonna screw up these colors because I'm colorblind. But the outside line is the overhang of the front of the truck. And as you can see, it's inside the curb line of the new laid out cul-de-sac. And then the lines inside here are the tires that come around the inside. So this is the furthest point of the overhang of the truck, as you can see, it gets close to the curb there. Comes up around, doesn't get outside the curb anywhere, it enters and leaves the cul-de-sac. So this is the, this is the ladder truck, um, we did do a turning analysis of a pumper truck just to show. That as well, going around the cul-de-sac, so it's just a smaller truck, obviously, if the ladder truck can make it around, the pumper truck could as well, so. That one makes it around with ease as well, and then we just went and redid the intersection. This is the intersection showing the pumper truck entering. The site and then exiting the site to the right, we're showing the right turn exiting because that's the more strict turn, leaving the site. And then we also gave you the ladder truck entering the site, as you can see, it crosses the lane. By about ten feet to swing into the site, and then it does. On the exit, it crosses the lane just under five feet when it swings to the right, so those, those were the turning movements we provided. So it, they really, we didn't change anything at the intersection of the street, we just tried to be more clear with the uh. With the color up in the plan, so the board had a better representation as to what's happening at the intersection. So again, like, uh, like Mr. Petrosi said, I haven't seen any, the comments from the fire chief, so I don't know what his concerns are. Other than the ones he previously had. So that, that's basically what we've, we revised and that's what we're sharing. This evening, and that's really all the information we've provided as far as new other than the architecturals. That I I don't, I don't have the architecturals to share with you on my screen. So I apologize for that.
Okay, well, let's deal with the issue of the uh, fire trucks and the turning radius, um, into it. Mr. Truax, can you go back to the one that shows the fire trucks turning into the site? That one right there, so.
That's the ladder truck.
Yeah, that's the ladder truck and um, I believe that the fire chief in his letter describes it as a dangerous situation. Where the fire truck is crossing um, over the center lane. Uh, center line in to get into the site, so um, that's, that's a, uh. That was a concern from the fire chief, and I would say that's a concern from, from me. What can you do to resolve this concern?
We really can't do anything more than we've already provided, um. The road's limited to the width, the right of way is limited to the width, the uh. But I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, that the existing condition that's out there today would be a worse situation. Because he's entering into a fourteen foot wide roadway. And there are trees along that left-hand sideline, there's a twenty four inch oak, there's a twelve inch maple. And so if he were to go in there to provide protection to the existing homes. He would have more of an unsafe situation than what we're providing. We are definitely improving the intersection than what's there today.
Yeah.
In addition to that, Mr. Chairman.
Let me go, the only issue with that is you're talking about uh, two homes that are on. Uh, Doopy Street, and now we're talking about adding eight large homes in there further down the road, so.
So let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, does that mean that two homes are less of a concern, that they don't matter as much? Every home matters.
That's, Mr. Truax, I'll caution you not to put words in my mouth about what I say. Uh, on safety of people in the town of Walpole. So what I'm saying is that it's possible for the fire department to access these. Buildings that are close to Route twenty seven, possibly from Route twenty seven, whereas what we're talking about is. Uh, and hundreds of feet down the road, this new road that's being put in there, uh, eight units are being put in there. That's what I'm talking about, okay.
Mr. Chair, um, if I could just say.
Green, go ahead, uh, sorry, Mr. Scully with green.
Um, so, um, I I don't believe, uh, other than the one house on the corner. Uh, could be served by any trucks on High Plains Street, all the other, the two others down the street would have to be uh. Served by trucks going down Doopy Street, uh, but also just, just again, and I'm not, I'm not. Elittling any, anything here, but a truck coming in, um, it's two things. Truck coming in under emergency has a siren and the flash is going, and. And, I mean, that's number one, and vehicles stop, pull over. On the main road when those trucks are coming through. And if, and if anyone really doubts that, I I, you know, I've been, I've been driving around this area for forty years and that's what happens. Um, also, uh, it's, it's more likely than not that. Uh, what's gonna come down here under emergency uh, calls is gonna be. Uh, engine one or two, the pumper truck and the ambulance. And those, those diagrams you've seen uh, in this set that was requested by uh. Uh, both uh, peer review consultant and the chief can make that turn without a, without a problem. Not not crossing the center line, and again, siren and flash is going, so, um. Uh, you know, whether it's the two houses down the street or or ten houses down the street. Uh, those, those vehicles can make it, the right turn coming out, um, even the chief said that's probably. Extremely unlikely that they're gonna ever come out and take a right turn to go towards Route one. Uh, from the site, but we showed that as well, and that, I mean, there is a very minor. Crossing in terms of a couple of feet uh, to make that right turn, but uh, you know, it's. I would, I would venture to say that uh, on, on what happens upon entering. On an emergency and the type of vehicles likely to go under emergency. Is not gonna create a, a dangerous or unsafe condition out there. Uh, and that's not taken into account the level of risk of calls going down there, which is. Pretty low, but a- anyways, I I mean, we've done everything we could. You can't widen the uh, corner radius at the corner, there's right of way, there's sidewalk. Um, the trees are clear, the poles gonna be moved, you know, all those things have been done. Pretty much in response to the chief's request, uh, to make this as, as good as it can be. Um, with what you have in terms of available right of way and and condition.
Suzanne, did you have a comment?
No, he just said with what we have, and I said, no, with what you have.
Okay, uh, other board members' comments on the um, the fire truck turning. Access into or out of the uh, the property here.
John, John, has the fire chief, has he looked at these, this new revised plan?
Yes, and we got a memo, um, dated.
Today.
And one of the things, as I, as I read it, he talks about, um, in point two. If possible, the entrance should be reevaluated, reevaluated to eliminate this dangerous maneuver and. Uh, I think the fire chief is recognizing that it is, uh, it's dangerous, um, so.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to point out.
Okay, and you know, oh, you know, the other things that the fire chief talked about were things that could be worked out, I thought. Um, but this is, this is a safety issue, and it's a safety issue on. A, you know, Route twenty seven, this is a busy road in town, so. So I hope that answers your question, Jane. Board members have any questions or comments?
Do we bring up the um, the poles now, too? Cause he did have an issue, that can become a safety issue if there is no power.
Okay, uh, can you clarify, you're talking about the telephone existing poles?
Yes, removal of. He's removing a pole or whatever.
Relocating.
Relocating, so you don't have to go near, if you're doing it yourself, don't you have to go through Verizon?
No, 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 the utility company, they they relocate the pole.
That's what I thought.
In a request, and they relocate the pole.
And he is, he was concerned of the, that there could be a delay.
The pole that we keep talking about moving. The pole that we keep talking about moving is not at the intersection and it's down by house number six. There's no pole at the intersection we're moving. But I think we had this discussion at the last meeting, people seem to be misunderstood about the pole. Um, Sean Riordan and I had this discussion as well, it's, it's on the edge of the road, it's right, it actually lands, I'm gonna share my screen again. I, I just wanna clarify it one more time. So the pole. Is right here. I don't know if my point is working, but it's, it's this utility pole and if you can zoom right in on it. And if you look at it, it's sitting right in the curb line. So it's, and I think Sean made a comment about it at the last meeting, it's not an obstruction to get in and out of the site. It will need to be relocated behind the curb, so they'll have to put a new pole in. Um, and they won't tell us where they're gonna put it until we have an approved plan to send to the utility company, they won't review a preliminary plan. They won't review your plans until they're approved, so we can't get them to comment on it at this point in time. But that's the pole that's being moved right here, it's up by house number six, it's the last pole on the street.
I don't know why, he's under the impression, it says right here, the applicant's document state one utility pole need to be re- relocated. To improve the Doopy intersection with High Plain. I don't know why he's confused.
I don't either, it's never been represented that way. I have never represented moving a pole at the intersection. I don't know where that comes from, that language, it just, it's, it's just not a true statement, it's not happening.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not positive, it's Bill Scully again, I'm not positive, uh, but it, it may have been, uh. Misstated way back when in the, some of the original uh memos where uh. You know, we may have been under the impression that the pole was gonna have to be relocated.
I, I'm just bringing it up because he wrote it, that's all.
Yeah, he did write it again, I saw that and. I just, it's, it's not correct, we're not, we're not moving the pole, the only thing that's coming down near the intersection are the trees. Which would improve.
And when we met with him, he see, we clarified and he seemed to understand, so I don't know why it's in the.
Yeah, I think it's just a carryover.
Google Maps, there's a pole directly in front of the Doopy Street, street sign currently. You're saying that's no longer there?
No, it's there.
And that's not.
I'll, I'll zoom in on it, hold on.
It's with the fire department truck currently.
But this is the pole right here.
No, no, it's shown on Google Maps. Correct, sorry, yep, sorry, you moved your mouse, yep.
It's right here, pole number twelve dash twenty-nine.
Right, that's not gonna come into interference with that turn.
Pole's not being moved.
Well, I understand, but that's not gonna be coming to interference with the fire truck, turn radius.
Uh, it's back like two or three feet behind the curb line.
I don't know. And, and all of our diagrams are showing that it's not gonna.
Yeah.
Impact those movements.
And the homes, I'm sorry, I guess I might, I, I did, excuse me, Chairman, can I, uh, ask a question? Um, the houses aren't sprinkled, right? They're not proposed to have sprinkler, sprinkler systems installed in them?
That's correct, no sprinklers.
And they're eleven feet apart? From one another?
They're eleven feet apart.
Well, I guess to think, and I guess I'm just hypothetically thinking of a situation here where if one were to have an issue. Eight of them could have a very quick, or six of them could have a very quick issue. Um, and a turning radius would be certainly adequate or necessary for a fire truck. To be coming in there quick to make sure that that doesn't become a larger safety issue for the, the embodied neighborhood. Uh, i- it just seems reasonable to me, I mean, I'm kinda thinking logically, but um. I would think that a quick response and a adequate turn radius would be something necessary if the fire department's saying so, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Petrosi.
So I, I just wanna, I just happened to receive a copy of the uh. Fire chief's memo from Amy, who was uh happy to send it to me. So I just wanna review this memo just a little bit because it seems to be a little bit of confusion here. So any of these vehicles that we are, uh, other than the ladder truck. The, the issue that Drew is bringing up regarding. Access is not an issue at all, the trucks can make the turn and the fire chief. Um, recognizes that in his memo. The issue simply revolves around the turning movements of the ladder truck. And the ladder truck is a little bit longer pe- because of it's just forty-three feet long and it's a new apparatus that they just got. And he doesn't say that it's mandatory that this intersection be trained, he says. If possible, this entrance should be reevaluated to eliminate this dangerous maneuver. Well, we've done everything that we can at this point to. Evaluate or reevaluate what we can do with this intersection, it is an existing intersection. And um, you know, we've done everything we can, so I, I would say that we have exhausted the if possible. Phraseology that he's used in his memo. Other than that particular comment. There isn't one negative comment in his memorandum which would signify a problem with this development. So. I'm not trying to, just to minimize the uh. The importance of a ladder truck, but certainly if there was an emergency on this roadway. All other vehicles, all other emerg- vehicles in the town of Walpole and the fire department, police department. Ambulances can all access this roadway without in, involving any kind of dangerous maneuver. That is perceived to be a problem here, so. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure what we're trying to accomplish here, uh, but. I think we're making a, a, a better situation of the intersection, it is an exist- existing intersection. And um, I think we're doing uh an improvement over what was uh there, what is there today. And quite frankly, if, if um, you know, there's hydrants on the site and as you mentioned that they would be able to. Get to the first two houses without going down the roadway, they certainly would be able to get to the first couple of houses. Walking down the roadway as well, so, um. So this, the memo that the fire chief has issued is not. Is not a negative on the project, he's just requesting.
Mr. Petrosi, you, the fire chief said is, um, he describes it as a danger. He would like, if possible, the entrance should be reevaluated to eliminate this dangerous maneuver, so. I, I mean, you, you've, you've said or actually, um. I believe it was Mr. Scully's, uh, done everything, uh, done everything they could at, at this point, so. Um, you know, I th- I think that's maybe where, where we're at, that you've done everything you could uh on this and. You know, we, I, at least I still have concerns, but we'll see how it all shakes out, so, okay, um.
Can I ask another question, John?
Yeah, go ahead, Suzanne.
Did you, um, the visitor parking section, since you widened the turnaround, do we lose any spots?
Uh, I, I don't, Rob?
No, same.
Two?
Two.
So two visitor parkings for the whole unit?
Yes, and ea- each unit has four spaces.
Can you show me where the ma- uh, oh, we haven't decided on the mail, is there not gonna be a mail unit, there's gonna be boxes, did you decide that?
Um, we, we didn't decide on the mail, how that would be laid out.
So just two visitor parkings in the whole place, can you show me where snow removal was on the, on the plan since the thing is widened too, please?
Uh, give me a minute to find that sheet, sure.
Okay, thank you. You're getting so good at this, Rob?
I wasn't prepared for the snow removal though.
Just wondering.
PDF of that one made.
I just pulled my snow stakes up this week, actually.
Uh, you know, and I'm gonna open the whole thing and see if.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I don't have.
Do you remember where it was?
Uh, I do, I think, let me, I have a, I, I think I can just open the CAD drawing. It was off the, well, obviously they're gonna push to the edge of the roads and then off the end of the visitor parking was snow storage. Was the primary area along.
So you're just gonna push it and?
Correct. But you, you saw where the visitor parking was, correct?
Yep, yep.
So we have, we're just gonna be able to push it down in that area as excess storage. And then it was a little around the edge of the cul-de-sac.
This is one of those areas in town that gets hit. Cause it's high up. It just gets a lot of snow up there, so just, just heads up, I had to walk through there every day to go to school.
I can't get that, I don't have that in the PDF, the uh, but that's.
But I can put it down at the visitor parking lot area.
Correct, off the end of the visitor parking was the major storage area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Suzanne, I've got the plan here and beyond visitor parking, the two spots is snow storage. And then right where it says eighty-two foot diameter on the cul-de-sac. Uh, in the grassy area, it says snow storage there, so it is, it is on the plan.
Okay, thank you. Right when I said you were getting good too, Rob, huh?
I know. I blew it.
Murphy's Law.
Okay, any other issues for, that board members have on uh, on these? So, um, the height of the buildings, did we get that uh resolved, Mr. Petrosi?
Well, we provided the height of the buildings on the revised plans. But I, I would also like to, uh, I'm not sure if the board is aware of how the town zoning bylaws. Um, establish the height of the buildings, it's, it's actually the average grade around. Taken around all points of the properties of the, of the building itself, so. The front of the building is uh, and the sides of the building are significantly less in height. Than the rear of the building which has a walkout basement, so. We feel pretty comfortable that uh the average height of the building as required under the zoning. Bylaws is gonna be in compliance with your regulations.
Uh, okay, so we just guess, huh?
Oh, it's, it's, Suzanne, it's not a, it's not a guess, it's.
It's on, it's on there, so I'm gonna, I've got the plan, right, I'm gonna zoom in on it and I'm gonna get the actual height.
I think it's thirty-four feet, ten inches to the, in the rear of the building. Um, to the peak, peak of the roof.
It is thirty, thirty-four, ten, and that's what we'll be facing out to the people in the backyards on Victoria Circle, so. Okay, so thirty-four, ten on the back and I'm not seeing any front elevations.
Cause the, that front elevation is gonna be less than that by the depth of the walkout basement, so it's probably gonna be another. Eight feet um, less than that, so that's gonna be twenty, twenty-two feet or so, typical. Typical front elevation for a two-and-a-half story house.
Okay. So that actually brings into another question about, um, I had, you have a um. In this design, it shows it as on the second floor. Called, um. No. These, these are good. So how many floors of liv- cause I'm looking, I'm actually looking at the plans and I see. There's only two flo- two levels shown, but you just said there's gonna be three levels.
Well, the, the third level, Mr. Chairman, would be the basement level.
Okay.
So the walkout, uh, you know, typically when you have a walkout basement. Um, that area could be construed as living area or another story of living, cause it opens up to the outside.
Okay. Okay, that'll probably bring into question the number of bedrooms on these, but that's okay, that. That's probably a condition that we would do. Okay. Okay, uh, board members, any other questions or comments at this time?
So just to clarify on the height, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, so basically I think. What the applicant's proposing is that it won't need a waiver with regard to the zone, the height under the zoning. Uh, by law, is that, is that right?
That's correct, we're gonna make these buildings comply with your zoning.
Thanks. And Bob, obviously, that's important because when we do the, the waivers, we won't have to, there won't be any. Request for a waiver for height, so, okay.
And we did not request one either.
Right. Okay. Okay, any other uh questions from board members or anybody on this? Okay, so uh, let me just open it up, um, let's see, Amy, are there any uh neighbors or butters or any interested parties that wanna speak on this? If they are, please raise your hand.
Uh, yep, uh, did I lose her? Oh, so. Um, I don't know, Janice, you had your hand up, but you no longer do. So, oh, she's back, all right, I'm gonna have. She keeps disappearing on me, um, but here is, um, Sharon Martin.
Karen.
Sorry.
No problem, no problem, thank you very much, hello all, uh, Kieran Martin here from sixteen Victoria Circle. So just a couple of questions, I don't know, kinda repeating anything that went on before, but just, just in reference to the height. Um, cause I'm looking at the architectural plans and obviously they face onto us in, in Victoria. Can you clarify this again, like, so it does say. The architectural, the rear elevation has a mean height of thirty-four, ten? Can you clarify what, like, mean as in, mean of what?
The average of the back of the house.
The average of the back of the house, how could the, how could the back of a house have an average height, is it not just as high as it is?
Well, the, you know, I, I don't know the exact explanation for that, but the, the roof line itself, it's a hip roof, so. He's taking the highest point of that roof. And he's giving you the highest elevation that that building would be. Of course, the, you know, when you have a hip roof or some other type of roof. Design, the height to the valleys of the roof or the peaks of the, um. Rafters of the roof are gonna be different depending on where you intersect that roof line, so.
Okay, let's clarify this, um, Mr. Truax, can you bring up the plans, this is from, um. Morobito Architects and we can actually see because. As I'm looking at the plans, the thirty-four, ten is what they're showing as the height, but that is the average between the front and the back. Uh, giving us the thirty-four, ten, so the back is actually higher than thirty-four feet, ten inches. So if we can bring up the plans and we can all take a look at what we're talking about here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have those plans on my uh, those new plans on my file. I only have the old ones.
Amy, do you have those, can you share, um, share those, these are the Doopy forty-B architectural plans revised?
The newest ones?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yes.
Yep. I'm just getting in the project webpage.
Just so everybody, what I'm talking about is it's quite clear that. The thirty-four feet, ten inches does not go to the ground on the back of the house, it's the, there's a line that's. You can't tell how high above the ground it is, but it's pretty clear that that is not the, the total height on the back, that's. As Mr. Petrosi said, the average height, but that is not the, the back elevation, the back elevation is greater than that.
Okay. Whenever you want. Whenever you want me to. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we, we can see the screen. Can you just scroll down a little? I'd like to see the left side elevation, uh, down a little bit more. I'm sorry, I guess the word is up, not down. Or like nodding and shaking. Uh, keep going. Right there, that's what we're talking about. So Mr. Martin, as in a butter, um, would, the back of the house is going to be. As you see here, thirty-four feet, ten inches, but that does, that does not go all the way to the ground. It's going to be higher than thirty-four, ten inches, uh, because this measurement. Is the average of the front elevation and the back elevation. That's how it's being calculated.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so higher basically from, from the back, the bit we can see. Uh, and, and just as a follow-on point from this, and, and this was, could have been the two twenty-four meter, or maybe the one even back in January when we first. Asked for elevations was, um, I forget the guy's name, Sean from Tetra Tech. Uh, I was looking for this, but he, he was saying that, because he was saying basically from High Plains Street looking up Doopie. You know, the road raised up and I was asking a question at the time, like. Relatively speaking to where, you know, like my roof line is or my, or some point in my house or some point somewhere, like where. Is, is, is it possible to get a point on the site plan where we could say, hey, this is thirty-four feet or thirty feet from here? And he said that should be an easy thing to put into the plan, but obviously I can't read. Those, those site plans. Because it, because I suppose the concern is, is this a mean height or an actual physical, um. An actual height, but like starting from where relative to, to my property?
So the, are you asking the distance from your property, from your property line?
No, it, no, the, the, what he was saying, what Sean had said was that like these, he, he had kind of given a. He, he'd almost made it seem like that this street, Doopie Street is gonna be naturally higher than Victoria. So, so these houses, not only are they two and a half story, not only are they gonna be higher houses, their, their ground level is already higher. So it's, you know, like it, it'll look, it'll look basically like a full three-story house at least. And what he had said was, they should be able to find someplace on the site that's like a point of reference is that. Okay, here's something you could say as of today, ju- just so we could actually kind of visualize, how tall are these gonna be? You know, like it's thirty-four feet starting from where, or thirty feet starting from where? Is that gonna be?
Ground level.
Yeah, but i- i- is that, I, I suppose like, how, is it possible for us to find out like how much higher that ground level is from our property?
I, I don't know what the elevation, what, what house number do you live in?
Uh, sixteen.
He's showing the topo, Rob.
I don't have topo on his lot, but I mean. Does the, does the land behind you rise up considerably or is it pretty flat out your back door?
Uh, out my back door, it's flat, but it starts to rise into, into this property.
Well, the contours on our property are kind of perpendicular to your property. So they come on your property. It doesn't show a hill, it's property line going up. So whatever's on our property is probably pretty relatively close to yours. So. These basements are gonna be, but you're gonna see, you know, you're gonna see. Three stories. It's a walkout basement. So you're gonna see the basement level. As like if you were looking at as a first floor and then you'll see a second and a third floor.
Okay.
You're gonna have, you know, that, if Amy can scroll down to see the rear elevation.
But, well, once the.
That's what you're gonna look at. That's probably from ground to the gutter line is an average house for three stories is nine feet a story. So it's approximately twenty-seven feet of wall right there.
But w- once the landscaping is in though, you're not gonna see that lower story.
But if we do the plantings correct along the property line, there is gonna be some plantings there that, I mean, we were proposing, I don't remember the height, like six feet.
Five.
But, you know, the, the point is, we, we're talking about thirty feet from the property line, there's gonna be a structure that is at least. At least thirty-five feet tall and, you know, I'm, I'm saying that because. It's thirty-four feet, ten inches and that's not to the, the ground. We can't say exactly what the, the back wall is gonna be. Because we don't have that measurement, but we know that it's, it's over thirty-four, ten. So that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Okay, thank you. And, and finally, just last question, this is not, just from my own. Uh, kind of curiosity. When I was looking at the plans, the site plans from January and this revised one, actually February, so, so the. The eighty, so now that the cul-de-sac is an eighty-two foot diameter as opposed to whatever it was, seventy-eight maybe, or, and the, wh- what is actually. Like, when I try and even overlay them, like, it's like nothing has changed, but i- is it that just at the. Property seven and eight, their driveways have got shorter, is that it?
Driveways seven and eight got shorter and it went from eighty foot diameter to eighty-two. It's only a two foot increase.
So it was all on the back end, all on the backside? Okay. Uh, thank you very much. That was, that was all my questions.
Hey, thank you. Um.
Okay, so if you wanna go to the next um, person for the public input, it's Julie Sullivan.
Go ahead, Julie.
Hi everyone, this is uh, Julie Sullivan from twenty-four Victoria Circle. Um, just to kinda um. Expand on what Kieran was mentioning about, you know, the height of the. The backside of the, the units being, you know, thirty-four plus or whatever it is. That's, that's a good, uh, you know, ten feet higher. Um, than, than our houses. Um, and we're talking about, you know, putting in. Four to six foot arborvitae that are six feet apart that, and, and Cliff Bomer mentioned this too, this is not gonna provide us. Any real privacy for years. Um, and you know, when I look at planting plans, it, it would show. You know, that you at least plant that, you, you six feet apart, but then two rows of them. So it fills in that gap. So we're gonna have a pretty big gap in between those trees. Maybe at the bottom it fills out at some point. Um, but without having those double line trees, we're, we're still gonna lose quite a bit of privacy there. Um, so you know, I, I, I just. Want the board to consider potentially, you know, requesting that we get some more mature trees in there. So we get some, some better privacy upfront. Um, just especially given that we're, again, we're looking at really three stories and not two stories. That's gonna be looking right into. You know, our, our, you know, our family rooms, our kitchens.
The applicant, the applicant just said out loud, you won't be able to see the bottom floor with the, with the trees. So we'll see.
Well, you know, Suzanne, I think the, a condition the zoning board can put in is that the um. They'd stagger the, the plantings and we can specify the size of the, the plantings. Um, you know, a six-foot arborvitae is not, uh, not gonna provide much. But a ten-foot arborvitae gets a, gets things going a lot faster if, uh. You know, ten feet, ten feet on center, uh, that would be a, probably a better planting to provide some protection for the neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy, anybody else?
Sorry, um, yep, it just says T H on it, but I'm gonna make an educated guess that it's Tyler Hool. Just from, um. The past. Here you go.
It's a correct educated guess, thank you. Um, hi everybody, this is Tyler Hool from twenty Victoria Circle. Um, I'll, I'll mention the, the privacy. I don't think I need to continue anything that's just been said here. Um, certainly larger trees staggered, anything that you can do there. Um, the other thing that I'll mention, kind of that, that we're a little bit talking about here is, right, I mean, there's gonna be four houses behind me. Four houses, four families behind my house. Um. People's kitchens, dining rooms, living rooms are gonna be staring into my bedroom, my bathroom, my children's bedroom, their bathroom. I, I need some more privacy. I'm wondering if there's any conditions we can do with the placement or the size of the windows. Um, on, on these upper floors because, I mean, trees can only grow so tall. Obviously they're, they're put in at, at ten feet, but like I said, I mean, if someone's kitchen or dining room is looking into my daughter's bedroom, that's. I, I think you can understand where I'm going, right? Um, the other thing that I'll mention here is, goes back to the fire department here. Stated that the changes to High Plains and Doopie Street intersection will make it better. Um. However, there are eight new homes on the street. Eight new homes does not make that better. It increases the likelihood that there could be an issue. Six of the homes located eleven feet from each other further increases that likelihood. So if there is an issue. Again, there are four houses behind me. So while it increases the ability to get in there. The fact that they're there is, is a larger issue and getting there and moving around and now all of a sudden maybe you need to go back and forth. These houses are thirty-four feet tall. Probably need a ladder to get up there, right? So they might need to bring in the big guys. Those are my two points for today. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Tyler. Okay. Anybody else?
So we do have Julie Sullivan who has her hand raised again.
Yeah, well, actually my name is Dean. I'm picking, backing off uh, Julie's, Julie's dialing here.
Oh, okay.
Longtime listener, first time dialer. Uh, few comments, right? And I'm just gonna piggyback off everyone else as well. I mean, the height is a, is a big concern for myself and the neighbors, right? I mean, if I wanted to look into somebody's house, I would have stayed in the city. But I didn't, and I moved out here where there's more space. Like Tyler mentioned. I don't think anybody really wants, you know, all these eyes peering over these, these four-foot trees that are being planted into our yards and our houses. You know, secondly, uh, to piggyback off what Suzanne mentioned, the cul-de-sac point, if you think about the cul-de-sac that's being put on Doopie, it's eighty-two feet. Our street has a hundred-four cul-de-sac. And as Suzanne mentioned, we get a lot of snow in this area. I mean, for the majority of this winter, our cul-de-sac was consumed with snow. Um, so shrunk, I'm guessing five foot on each side of the cul-de-sac, which shrinks the cul-de-sac quite a bit. You know, I still have, if you come to down Victoria Circle, you'll still see snow on the cul-de-sac. You know, it's, it takes a while and it's, it's a large accumulation. And lastly, I, I hear the, kind of the dismissal of the concerns of the fact the fire truck has to go over the median. You know, I, I guess as a suggestion, right? If the applicant Lou, or anyone else, sir, you know, is uh. Of his party wants to put up an indemnity to the town of Walpole, I'm sure that would be well received as well. So anyway, thanks for the time and uh, yeah, look forward to discussing further.
Okay, and thank you for your comments. And as far as the indemnity, um, no, that's not gonna happen and the issue is. The safety gets addressed by the zoning board and that's why, that's why we're here. So hopefully.
I, I, I understand, Mr. Lee. I understand. I'm, I'm just making referral here that it's just, you know. Every time I'm on these calls, it seems like things are just dismissed. Not from you all, you know, from the, uh, from the applicant and others.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Amy?
I don't see any other hands raised, no.
Okay, uh, board members, uh, your thoughts, um, and. Moving forward at, at this point, we've, we've been at this for a while. Um. You know, we, it seems like we just keep going, going back and forth on, on some of these things. Um. So actually I just saw Janice is trying to uh, to speak, so.
Yep, I just saw that too.
Just let me just ask, uh, board members, um, where do you feel we are in this process? Uh. We getting close or, you know. Uh, it, it, or is it, or have they done everything they could? I guess that's the, that's gonna be the quote for the evening, you know, done everything they could.
Can I speak?
Hold on, Janice. I'm just getting input from the board members. Um.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that the applicant, you know, provided the information in response to our last set of requests and. And it, it seems to me like, that the, you know, conditions that we're faced with aren't gonna change. Uh, I don't think the plans are gonna change. So. I, you know, suggest maybe that the board next consider the waivers and whether, to whether they should be granted, you know. We'll discuss them first before closing the hearing so we could have uh, some feedback on that.
Okay, okay.
John.
Go ahead, Jane.
Um. I'm, I'm still stuck on the safety issue. That's my, that's my big shtick. Um, the fire chief. While he didn't say, you cannot do this, he made it abundantly clear here that it's a dangerous maneuver to get in and out there and. I do feel that's a, that's a tough area there. The traffic moves very swiftly. And you've got that intersection there and I think the idea of having a ladder truck have to swerve around and as you look at the plans. It's not just swerving right away. It's a considerable amount of feet, considerable number of feet. That you're over the line before you do go in. So I, I, I. Take the fire department's comments very, very seriously.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Okay, um, Janice, um, do, go ahead. You've got the floor.
Thank you. Sorry about that before. Um, I have major concerns about with the fire department also. One of my uh, concerns is when they say that the ladder truck or any truck can get down there. How many emergency vehicles can be in that spot at one time? Because every time I see the fire engines going up the street, and I've got a bird's eye view here, um, you've got. The fire chief's truck, you've got a police car, you've got an ambulance and, you know, they come in different orders. They're not the same order all the time. And uh, of course, as you said, they go flying by. I don't know how a truck coming up the street here would be able to stop quick enough, but. But still, even though they've widened the area down there. What can they accommodate in terms of emergency vehicles? I mean, I don't expect you to be able to answer that, but I mean, this is what my, what I'm thinking about. And uh, I take great offense when Mr. Scully starts saying. Oh, well, you know, there's not gonna be that much activity down there. He's not gonna be living here. So. That, just leave that where it is. But yes, I'm very concerned about. You know, then they get in, they sure they can get in, they can get out, but you have multiple. Um, pieces of equipment going in. And then if one has to get out and then you've got a truck down there and the ambulance, you don't know how they can manipulate around each other. And um, so that, that's one of my major things with the um, with the fire department there. Of, you know, questioning. And then I'm very, very concerned about the number of homes down there. Um, you know, Mr. Petrosi doesn't care because he has a contract with the current owner. And in that contract, he says he will not build fewer than eight buildings. And I just feel that's it, that is wrong for the neighborhood. You know, that's why he's not, he went down from twelve because it also was listed in their agreement that they would build twelve. But no less than eight. And I don't know legally because then you've got the housing authority. And I don't think the housing authority is saying that they have to build eight units. I don't know what percentage he needs to get out of this project versus other ones that he's got in town. But that's of great concern to me because to put eight homes at the end of that, on that small piece of land, we've said this over and over again. And it is, it creates a huge, huge safety issue. Um, you know, all, all times of the year. All times. And then when you think about even, okay, we know how bad it is with snow, but you talk about Fourth of July, when we get back to our more normal. When you have the traffic going up the street from the fireworks when they're over. And I mean, if I wanted to go to the fireworks, I would always have to plan to stay either in town till about eleven, twelve o'clock. Or walk over with a friend or walk home, you know, so that also, there's a lot, it's not just the winter. It's year round, there are issues. And um, so I'm very concerned about that and it really bothers me that. Um, that many homes back there. So, a- and that is also a, a big safety issue. So that's where I boiled it down to and those are huge. You know, you can have a whole bunch of things, but really the major ones, they're, those are important. And also just uh, to note that the arborvitae trees, they don't grow very fast around here. The soil just, you know, just doesn't do it. I know from experience. So anyway, so that's what I have tonight. Um, anything else, I'll just put into a letter or maybe reiterate this, but. It really bothers me because um, Mr. Petrosi just seems to think that, well, he's done what he can. He's come into the neighborhood and really. Uh, tried to physically ruin this whole area by too many homes. You know, like I've said, you know, on that piece of land, maybe two homes. But um, this is ridiculous to, to put that, and then two parking spaces for visitors. I mean. Not even one parking space for each home. That, that is horrible. And um, I don't think anybody would wanna live under those conditions. And like the previous uh, fellow said, you know, if he wanted to look into his neighbor's uh, home, he would have stayed in the city and that's so true. So that's it for me for tonight, cause you guys, I know you have a long night and I really appreciate. So that's it for me for tonight, because you guys, I know you have a long night and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Yep. Thank you for your comments. And we do have, um, uh, Mr. Hool, I believe you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so with, with regards to the fire department and, um, vehicles going in and out, we've talked about one vehicle going in or one vehicle going out or one vehicle turning in the cul-de-sac. How does this look with multiple? Does this number of homes, like right if there's six homes there and it does require multiple, how does that look? I just don't know if there's any insight on that, if that, like if, if an ambulance comes in to take people out, can it leave when a fire truck is there?
Uh, okay, I'm going to, uh, ask Rob Truax to answer that question. Um, can an ambulance and a fire truck pass on Doopie Street?
Yes. It's twenty feet wide, ten foot per lane.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Hool, that answers the question.
Great.
Okay. Okay, so at, at this point, um, I think that, as Bob said, I think what we should be looking at is in the next meeting to address the waivers, and this is how we do it on a, um, a forty B development. The board, um, meets and we go through the individual waivers that have been requested and, um, and then, you know, after that, then the decision starts to get drafted. Bob, do you have anything to add procedurally on that? Cause you, you're the one that mentioned this and I, I do agree with it, but do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I just think, uh, I mean, we could get guidance from, uh, from George on this as well, but to keep the hearing open, um, you know, so that we can review the, the waiver requests and take additional information, uh, from the applicant, the public. And then maybe after that discussion is done, then we, uh, can close the hearing and start the deliberations on a, on decision. That would be my suggestion.
Yep. And the, the board is pretty familiar with this from other, um, decisions that we've worked on and are working on. So, uh, George, any guidance on that?
Uh, yes, I do. My only concern is I think you're going on, um, you know, agreed extensions on this from Mr. Petrosi. So if you're going to, and I think the latest one is coming up. I, I, I thought that there was another continue, um, agreed continuance shortly following this hearing date. Uh, so if you're going to, uh, try to keep the hearing open, it's important that you get, uh, Mr. Petrosi's assent and then have a written, um, extension agreement filed with the town clerk. Um, if he does not want to grant that, I would recommend closing the public hearing tonight, even though he would obviously benefit from your usual procedure of going through the waivers in while you still have the hearing open so that you could get, you could, uh, have a discussion with the applicant, uh, if warranted. It's always a better practice to keep the hearing open because you never know what will come up. Because once you close it, you won't be able to, you know, have any further dialogue outside of your own board members. So my, so my only caveat would just be, um, you need an extension. If you're going to keep the public hearing open, I believe. From, from the date that I recall, I just don't have the date in front of me.
George, how can we accept waivers if the hearing's closed?
You would, you would just act on them. If you close the hearing tonight, you would have forty day, forty days to deliberate an issue and, and render a decision. So you just have to do it on your own.
No, I, 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 we, we don't do it that way, but how can we take new information in if the hearing's closed?
You wouldn't. You would just go on whatever, I, I imagine there's going to be a waiver request somewhere in the uh, filings, I would imagine, but if not then.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
A waiver request and, um, I think what we're saying is that's, that's our next step is to do the waivers. And the only question is, are we going to have input from the town boards, Mr. Petrosi, the public as we, as we do the waivers? Or do we want to consider closing it and start the clock on a decision at this point? So, so, Mr., yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy, since I'm on the agenda on April seventh, if possible, I'd be happy to extend to, um, public hearing till April seventh and then, um, you know, give, give the board plenty of time to, um, discuss the waivers and if we can add any other information, we'd be happy to do so.
Well, I know we've got two forty eight cases that night. Amy, what do, what do we have for, um, what do we have going on for the seventh besides?
So for the seventh, we have Moose Hill forty B, a special permit, a variance, and the Burns Ave modification number two.
Okay, so. Nope. And what, what I was actually looking at is doing the, doing the waivers, and I hate to do this to the zoning board members, but on the fourteenth, the following week, if we could meet that Wednesday, um, that's not school vacation week, that's the following week. Um, we could, we could continue it out until the fourteenth. And that night would be, uh, just addressing the waivers if, um, if we wanted. And Mr. O'Larry, uh, who's, he just put in the chat, he said, um, that the case was extended to, uh, the twenty fifth, which is normal. We'd, we'd extend it, um, to the day after today. Uh, and that's per his notes and that's what I had. So, uh, Mr. Petrosi, do you want to grant an extension until the?
Fifteenth?
Well, yeah, until the fifteenth and we will have the hearing on the fourteenth.
I'm, I'm amenable to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And will you provide, uh, Amy a letter stating that you'll, um, extend until the fifteenth? Uh, that would be Thursday, April fifteenth, so we can, um, file that with the town clerk.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay. Okay. Suzanne.
John, you have the complete list of waivers updated and everything?
Yep, it's in, it's in the original application. I don't have it in, in front of me, but, uh, that is, and that's what we're going to go off of. There's been no, there's been no modification to the list of waivers.
Mr. Chairman, there was a revised list when we changed the project to eight units. So, so just be aware that there should be an amended, uh, request for waivers that is dated around the time that we submitted the eight units.
It's January tenth.
Yeah, John, I was going to interject. It would be really good if you could make sure that you're going off the latest, uh, revision of the, of the waiver requests. Um, so if, if, if there's not going to be anything further submitted, let's just be able to confirm maybe through Amy that you have the latest list. Um, you know, based on any project changes or anything like that. Like for instance, tonight, maybe it was in the original, uh, waiver request that there wasn't a waiver being requested for height. Um, but you know, those are the types of things that you obviously, you want the most updated uh, uh, list possible, because anything you're not going to specifically grant is going to be denied.
Okay. So, and I'm not going to ask Amy to, I'm not going to put you on the spot to, I, you're probably searching right now, but.
I, I found it. Um, it says revised list of waivers dated January tenth of twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Will you send that to me, Amy?
Yep.
Please.
It's.
Might want to just send one to everybody.
Yeah, I'll highlight the link. It's online, but I'll definitely send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, uh, at this point, at the request of the applicant, could I have a motion to extend the, this hearing until April fifteenth and have the next, the next hearing on the fourteenth?
At seven P M. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Um, uh, Suzanne, uh, roll call vote. Suzanne Murphy?
Aye.
Rob Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Dan Coffey?
Aye.
Drew Delaney? And I'm John Lee. Aye. Okay, so this is continued until Wednesday, April fourteenth at seven P M. No further notice will be given. And we will address the, uh, the waivers. One by one, we go through the waivers on this. So, okay. Um, thank you, everybody. George, thank you for being with us this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Amy, anything else, uh, for the board? I did see that there was minutes for February twenty second, but I don't.
I'll take up. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you, George.
I thank you, George.
Hi, George. Thank you.
Good night. You don't have to hang either.
No, Patrick can, can hang.
Stay at the end.
Okay. Um, I didn't send those minutes, but you'll have them for Monday and you can approve them.
Okay.
All right.
For, yes, for Monday. Yeah.
Monday is Summer.
Summer Street.
Summer Street. Okay, we're in good shape?
Yeah, then we go to Summer Street on Monday, so.
So we better have a good weekend.
Okay, um,
All right.
Anything else? Bob, you good?
I'm good. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Woo hoo! Second!
Second by Suzanne. Okay, this is not a roll call vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, abstained. Good evening, everybody. Thanks. I'll talk to everyone.
Thanks.